All right, welcome to our Tuesday night meeting on January 10th. And I don't see anybody, any guests here, and maybe there's some online, but you're so welcome. And we can get started with our six o'clock discussion items.
Great. The first item we're going to discuss is the conference of planning process. And Anna Crane, our Director of Planning and Development Services, is going to walk through a presentation.
So this presentation has been made to the Plan Commission in two separate presentations. We've just combined it here. So really, the goal is to show you or go through what the comprehensive plan process is. So what is an introduction to comprehensive planning? Some differences between zoning and planning, and then talk about who's going to be involved in the process. So I'll try to go through this fairly quickly. Feel free to stop me if you have questions as we go through. So what is a comprehensive plan? This is really a policy document that acts as a guide for our decision making moving forward. It's tied to various departments and zoning and ordinances come kind of after this policy document. But it really guides not just the physical growth, but also, you know, policies related to the social aspects of our community or economy. All that kind of big picture items. Traditionally, comprehensive plans or master plans, as they're sometimes referred to, have really been rooted in the future land use. So they really grew as a tool when communities had land they were expanding into and trying to identify how that would be used moving forward. So in communities like ours that are already established in terms of our boundaries, we don't have anywhere we're looking into, compliance have really grown to include a lot more engagement, to gain consensus on kind of paths and policies moving forward outside of just physical development. So we'll go through that. So establishing the comprehensive plan really gets rooted in Missouri statutes. So I kind of bolded a few of the key terms related to the comprehensive plan and where, how it's established. So within the Missouri statute, it's, it's a city plan for the physical development, but it also talks about surveying existing conditions and thinking about the probable future and growth of the community. So there's basic elements of a comprehensive plan outlined in these statutes that we will include, but it doesn't limit us from expanding beyond that physical development role. And then really relating back to that general welfare and how we want to develop our community. When we look at the city charter, a lot of the language you see here that refers to planning and zoning, creating of the Plan Commission, and this plan is, is almost identical language to what you see within the Missouri statutes, which really again align this plan with the responsibilities being the Plan Commission as the adopting authority. One of the very, one of the areas that our city charter kind of varies from those Missouri statutes is it talks about presenting that plan to the Board of Aldermen for approval. But because of how this, the state charter or the state statutes are set up, really, it's the Plan Commission has the authority to prove that. And then to be kind of in line with our charter regulations, we will present that adopted plan from the Plan Commission to this board, but more in a, in a presentation mode and not in a way that you would then make changes to what has been adopted by the Plan Commission. So what do we look for in a comprehensive plan? Some of the language you'll see on the screen here is pulled directly from our request for proposals. So really, when we think about the, the big picture of where our community is headed, we think about the different aspects that influence how our community is for people that live here or work here or own property. So we're thinking about our economy, we think about the natural environment, stormwater issue, sustainability, the built environment, what's that physical atmosphere that we walk around in? Our regional context is really important here in, in the St. Louis area. So what's our kind of role within the region? And how does that regional context influence what happens within our boundaries? And then also that social environment, what makes people want to spend time in the community? So when we look at our actual plan content, one thing that has changed since previous proposals to do a comp plan for the city is outlining sustainability and equity guiding principles. There's a, there's a variety of ways that communities will organize their plan. I think based on a lot of the conversations that have been coming out of some of our subcommittees, the way that we decided to establish it within our RFP is early in the process, really defining what prints, the guiding principles are in terms of equity and sustainability related to our community. And then use those principles as a lens for reviewing and setting priorities in the larger categories of our physical development, our economic policy, our transportation analysis, all of those community elements that are outlined below. As opposed to having future land use and then a separate section on sustainability, because there's so much overlap within a lot of those categories. The community needs assessment, that's kind of a more of a moment in time look at it market analysis. So what are kind of our demographics? How do we spend money? What are potential gaps or types of businesses maybe that we could support here? Mention the existing and, and future land use, transportation network analysis. That will overlap a little bit with our livable communities plan, which is looking at pedestrian and trails. And then a big one is the performance management and implementation part of the plan. That's where we're actually identify some, the path forward. So now we've set the policy kind of guiding principles. How can we start to work to implement and get there? So that leads us into really an area that sometimes can be a little bit confusing is the difference between planning and zoning. So the comprehensive plan, again, this is our policy directions outlines our goals and our vision. Whereas the zoning, that's an actual tool for implementation and enforcement. So that's really a mechanism that would come after our guide is set up within the plan document. Then we look at our tools, how we're enforcing projects moving forward and update that. So thinking about the downtown master plan, an example was creating that Maryland Gateway District. So we identified a vision for a specific area and some key actions that relate to that vision. Then the result in our actual implementation tool was creating that Maryland Gateway overlay, which is an actual enforcement mechanism that we can use to directly influence projects. And so we have really updated that within the downtown master plan for a specific area, but it's been a really long time since the city has looked at, it's a city of a whole in terms of that guiding principles. And where do we need to update some of our codes and influence different areas, not just our, our downtown? So who will be involved? This is probably a question that a lot of people are curious about. There's a few different kind of larger categories of that, the consultant team. So that's a team that will be selected through the interview process that will work really kind of hand in hand with staff to make sure that elements of the plan are created to kind of meet minimum standards, that they're included. The consultant team will really be the ones that are responsible for drafting the plan language, the content that goes into it. So they'll kind of work on that document and, and we'll be able to choose them through our interview panel process. The steering committee is really a big representative and we'll go into them a little bit more in a few slides, but they're really the, the community representation that will stay constant throughout the entire process. They're providing guidance and feedback and they're going to be representatives of really hopefully a variety of stakeholders within our community. The public is incredibly important to successful comprehensive planning. So we really need to make sure and we'll work with the consultant team to make sure that we're approaching the public in different avenues. When we think about Clayton, we have residents of all ages and types. We've got property owners, but a big part of what makes the Clayton community are the people that come here to work, the people that come here to spend their time at our restaurants, the businesses that choose to locate here. So that's another avenue that a lot of times more standard traditional comprehensive plans focus on the, the residents and the property owners. One thing we need to make sure that we're doing within our comprehensive plan is also engaging some of those, those other people that might not live here full time, but are really important to the, you know, the success of our commercial areas.
Include the county?
They'll be, they'll be invited to participate. Yep. So the Plan Commission, as I mentioned before, within the statutes for the comprehensive, or for the, the planning document, they're the adopting authority. So they're rarely involved in the process. And, and another slide will kind of break down how they'll be involved in different elements. But ultimately, they'll be the ones who will review and adopt our comprehensive plan. And then you all, the Board of Aldermen, will be presented that plan after. So it'll be important for you all to continue to be involved throughout the process, making sure that people come out to participate in the, in the different engagement activities that we have, providing feedback. You can provide feedback through the process and intend, attend events as well. But you aren't a little different from a lot of the projects that come before you. You aren't the ultimate adopting authority of this plan. So that your participation throughout will be slightly different than with a PUD, where ultimately you have the adopted authority over that development. Okay, so going into the steering committee just a little bit more, really, the roles of the steering committee fall into two main categories. The first being that the steering committee is really the representation of our community interests and our stakeholders. So relaying information back to the groups that they represent, encouraging participation from different community members, being that link for the consultant team and staff that might not have direct people to reach out to in some of the, the groups that we want to make sure their feedback's engaged and then attending events. So that category of really helping to make sure that we get that public feedback and the message is important. And then the second role is guiding staff and the consultant team. So really commitment to attending the meetings. The, the steering committee will be kind of that, you know, first you work to make sure that everybody comes to the engagement meetings, then staff and the consultant team kind of take the feedback from different various, you know, meetings or events or surveys or what it might be and evaluate what that is. And then the steering committee provides feedback. Yep, it sounds like that's a, a good interpretation of the feedback received at engagement or not. And then also providing feedback as we look to draft priorities. So there's going to be tons, when we talk about engagement of the comprehensive plan, touching a lot of aspects of the community. So a big part of- Let me just reshare my screen here. Okay, so what do we look for in steering committee members? So again, building on the commitment, really, we need representatives who are going to attend these meetings. That's the really important way to make sure that we're providing the right direction to the consulting group. Another big one is really the passion for the direction of the community. So you want to be involved with the future of what the community is, since this is a, a policy document that's driven towards the future. So I put this graphic from an earlier slide back up here. So when we think about what is influencing and making up a community, we want to think about representation of these different aspects and, and look at residents, businesses, like I talked about before, professionals that might be in a few different categories that have kind of training and knowledge about different aspects that are important to a comprehensive plan, institutions that are a part of our community. So as much as we can, when we're establishing and solidifying who's on the steering committee, we want to try to get a variety of representation through that. So in our first discussion with the Plan Commission, we kind of presented this idea of what the structure would be to support that. We're looking at a nine-member group for a steering committee. We think that's a, a good number to provide some variety and representation, but also a number that's easy to manage in terms of gaining a consensus scheduling ability, other things like that. So three members will be representatives from the Plan Commission. Then we'll have a representative from sustainability, one from equity, and another one from the school district. And then the last three members will be at-large community representatives, that we aren't going to restrict what it means to be a community representative at this time. It will hopefully help us fill out the steering committee with other representative groups. So for existing commissions and committees, those, or those entities will be involved in selecting and letting us know who the representative will be. So sustainability committee will determine who their representative for the steering committee is. Staff's not going to choose a representative from them or from Plan Commission to participate. And then for the three at-large community representatives, we're really going to essentially use an application or an interest form. So community members will be able to submit themselves as options for these at-large members. And a few reasons why we want to do that. One, again, we really want people that are committed to this process in the future and, and providing feedback. So this will allow them to present themselves as people who are willing to make that commitment to be engaged, but also hopefully allow us to, again, at the end, make sure that we have those various representatives when we look at how to fill out our steering committee structure. The Plan Commission then will serve a few different roles. So one of them is providing the three members to serve on the steering committee. The other three members who are not serving on the steering committee will then kind of run our interview panel, so to speak. So they'll be representatives along with a few staff members that will interview the different consultant teams to ultimately select a consultant. And there'll also then be the, the three that will review any of the interest forms that we receive from at-large community representatives to select those three at-large members that will then serve on the steering committee as well. So we're kind of separating the steer, the Plan Commission throughout the process to kind of spread their influence. The city manager will really operate as a, as a member of the staff during this process. So when we think about that relationship with the consultants, it's a really important one for staff to be going back and forth with. So that's where we'll have the city manager. And then when everything comes back with a draft plan to be presented to the Plan Commission and ultimately adopted, that's when then we'll work back with the Plan Commission in a whole, everybody there in their, their typical roles. So I did a really-
Good question. Can you, I'm not sure I totally understood the statement. City manager will act as a staff member. What does that mean?
So the-
As opposed to-
Right. So that just means that during, basically, we split the six members of the Plan Commission into either on the steering committee or part of the interview panel. And then the city manager is the seventh member of the Plan Commission, won't serve. Yeah, so, so David will be part of the interview panel, kind of as a part of the staff group and will be part of the ongoing working group with a consultant, but won't serve on the steering committee. So that's kind of how it'll be a little bit different from the other Plan Commission members. So overall, the process started December 5th, or 14th, when we posted the request for proposals. So those are due by February, end of day, February 1st. We've had a handful of kind of questions about responses to that. So hopefully, we'll, we'll get a good number of, of responses by February 1st. Then that's kind of when we'll open that commu, at-large community representative forum to start gaining interest from different representatives. And then early February is when we'll solidify that interview panel and start going through and selecting the consultants that we would like to actually interview. And the interviews will take place end of February, might spill over into March, depending on the scheduling of those. And then March would be when we would determine who our consultant is and go through the process of negotiating contracts and getting that, all of that set with the goal of starting our plan in April. So once that plan starts in April, we'd also have to have the, the steering committee set, because they'll start meeting on some sort of regularly scheduled meeting times. Then engagement will be settled, exactly what that looks like, based on who we choose as our consultant, but it will likely involve aspects of, you know, the website and presentations and surveys and events, whatnot. And we expect this process in total with the consultant to run probably a year, maybe a little bit longer, depending on the timeline of events for actual adoption with the public hearing requirement. But the plan should hopefully be completed within a year. And then the public hearing and adoption would be at the Plan Commission. And then we'll also make a presentation to the Board of Aldermen after that. All right, that was the highlights of the summary.
Very good. Great summary, great presentation, lots of information. That's really great. We'll just go around and see if anybody has questions. Rich, anything that you wanted to ask?
I guess the only question I have is, in the steering committee, it's, it's kind of hard with only nine people to get a real cross-section of everything, everybody. I guess the couple, one, couple that I'm curious about are business. You, you mentioned the business community being one of the stakeholders. Are they available to offer their services as an at-large?
Yes.
Okay. How about students? Since I see we probably have a few.
Yeah, that's a, a good point. So the nine is not a number that we have to be stuck to based on the responses. So that, we kind of talked about that, the Plan Commission had the same question. So once we start to see the, the members kind of form and what interests we're getting with that large form, we can always add more members to make sure that we're including everyone. The student one is interesting. We've been having a lot of, with, with the rest of the department, conversations about how we can intentionally engage students at different levels from elementary school through. But because when you think about a comprehensive plan's looking typically 10, 20 years in the future. So at the end of, we've implemented all of these goals of the plan, the people that are living in the community in terms of working here and owning property are the people that are currently in school. So it is really, it, it will be important. And that's also why we wanted to specifically invite a school board representative to be on the steering committee to hopefully help create more of a link to get engagement from those groups.
Thanks.
Ira, Ira, do you have some questions for Anna?
I, I do, just a couple. Anna, has this, is this sort of a model that's been done before in Clayton or in other cities?
For the steering committee?
Right.
Yes, typically, comprehensive plans of this nature will have a formula, a steering committee, advisory committees, you know, some, insert name. Yeah, so usually we outline when, from the past, when on the private sector side, working on these, we want to identify who those stakeholders are and then hopefully round out that groups. That's why we, there can be flexibility in that nine target number. I think nine's kind of our minimum number that we want. But it usually works well to have a solidified steering committee with intentional inviting different groups to participate in it.
So, so, because it, it seems like a daunting task. When you're talking about stakeholders, if you, if you, if you want to put on somebody from the business community, we don't know that they'll be here in 10 years, right, or 20 years. We don't know if any, any of our residents who might be on it will be here in 10 or 20 years either. And so it's like, you know, is there any way to figure out who might be more likely to be remaining as a resident or remaining as a, a business operator in the city?
I, I, I would just say, I think that'd be tough, Ira, especially residential. But you know, in terms of business, I mean, we have some major, if we want to go that route, we have small businesses and then we have major corporations. And I'm not sure, although anybody can be sold, right? But let's just give an example, something like Commerce Bank. You know, if they had a person, they want to offer up, you know, I mean, that, that would be more, less risky in terms of long-term. Yeah.
Right.
You might imagine, Ira, that someone who self-nominates for a planning process like this and feels engaged and listened to during it is even more likely to still be here in 10 or 20 years than, than some of us.
Mm-hmm. Okay, yeah, good points. Okay, that's it. I just was curious about how we're going to put that together, but I guess it'll be a process.
Bridget, any questions?
Yeah, I mean, we, I, we, I talked about this a lot at Plan Commission. I'm also kind of worried, obviously, about getting a full cross-section. One of the things we talked about related to getting the business community was I know Gary Carter meets with a group of people, you know, who obviously have shown a lot of interest in being involved and communicating with the city, so making sure that they're aware of the application that goes out to the community at large. And hopefully, we'll get somebody to respond and really be involved.
Are you talking about the Economic Development Advisory Board?
Yeah, and I know he just needs, or you, you, you and Gary have met with people. So just knowing, making sure that they're aware that there is this application out there. And then Anna, I, I guess I don't remember this, but the three other members from the Plan Commission that aren't on the steering commu, committee, are those three alone going to select the community representatives? Or will they get some input from others or?
The way we talked about it and have it right now is that those three alone would be doing it. It wouldn't be a staff decision, decision or influence. But obviously, we're here to provide help and guidance for this planning process. So, you know, we wouldn't leave your own advices if, if needed. But ideally, in this setup, it would be those three that would review it.
And then I was also, one of the things we talked about too, was just making sure that, that the people who are chosen from the, like, sustainability and equity and the, you know, that there's, that we kind of know who those people are before we start picking out the community at-large representatives, just so that we're getting a diverse cross-section of ages, males, females, you know, everything, so.
Okay, Susan, questions?
It was an excellent presentation and I, my one observation is, is pretty much the same, making sure that we get that representation on the steering committee. And a lot of that depends on how it plays out, as well as the community engagement afterwards. But nine does seem, when you listed all the voices that we actually need, including allied universities to what everyone else was saying, businesses, and those will be here for the long haul. It might be tough to make sure that we have all the voices we need in that, in nine people. So, but it, it depends how it all plays out in, in the other engagements.
Becky?
Thanks, Anna. I would just think it's, it would be great if we had so many people apply with such diverse backgrounds that we were able to expand the steering committee, but, and still have it be manageable. So that would be a great thing. And to keep in mind that the engagement is going to be focused to ensure that we're engaging with each of those groups, like, directly or, and that they all have an opportunity to participate in everything. So, and I think what you pointed out is the responsibility that really we all have to communicate on this to our constituents and neighbors, so that we ensure that people know about it and can participate. My only question is on the engagement. Understanding that we are going to be going through the pedestrian and bike planning process at the same time. I, I believe, are those going to be distinct plans, like separate consultants, right? Okay. And so I imagine you all are thinking about how to manage that, like, those two major engagements at the same time. I don't know what, if you can talk at all about what you've thought about that to date and how you-
Yeah, we've, we've had some internal session. I think a lot of that will be some staff leading to making sure that we're updating each other. We've also talked with, with Gabby in marketing about how to make sure that the message is clear and make sure that we don't have conflicting events for engagement. So I think through some of these channels, we'll be able to do so. But it will be an important part about making sure that we choose the right consultant too, to make sure that they are open to those types of processes and having things change or maybe hosting joint events that would be engagement for the livable communities and ours. But we definitely want to make sure that the, the plans align with each other and there aren't any conflicts and that we're reinforcing kind of the same goals. So we'll, we'll, it'll, it'll be something that we'll have to just keep an eye on as the process goes. But I think ultimately, it will, won't have any negative impacts on either plan.
Thanks. Alderman Fader?
Just as an aside, I'm teaching a class this week at Washington University Law School, a one-week class on commercial real estate. And I invited any of my students who wanted to see local government in action. So two of the students are here. So if you were wondering, those are two of my students. In May, we, I did say we also had a seven o'clock meeting, so a couple, couple more may wander in. Just a comment on the representation. It does occur to me, we probably don't want to expand the committee, but if we're looking at the business community, the Chamber of Commerce obviously represents a wide variety of businesses. And as the mayor and David know, because they come to the same meetings I do, the chamber has a monthly meeting, a legislative committee meeting. And a lot of those people, I think, are very interested in legislation like this. And so even if it's not a member of the steering committee, some way to reach out to the chamber to see if there's some way to involve them in the process, that might be a very direct way to try to get some input. And my, my question really for Anna was, I'm, I'm trying to understand at the end of this process, since the Plan Commission is ultimately not the implementing body for a lot of things, particularly rezoning, creating new districts. I'm wondering, is the level of specificity you're looking for from the Plan Commission in terms of recommendation, would it reach the level of, you know, hypothetically, taking this part of Clayton and rezone it, the recommendation from R1 to R2 or vice versa? the recommendation from R one to R two or vice versa? Is it, or is it more conceptual and it's still up to the Board of Aldermen to decide how to implement achieving that goal, assuming it's the right goal?
Uh, I think the implementation strategy will have a variety of levels in terms of what the actual steps to achieve the goal and the vision will be. The, when it comes to the rezoning or the establishment of a new zoning ordinance, I think that that's typically a follow up to any new comprehensive plan of this level is a more widespread analysis of our zoning code. So those types of aspects are directly and related to the Plan Commission's roles and responsibilities. So that's kind of probably has a lot to do with why the statutes outline them as the adopting authority in this case. But I think there'll be a variety of looking specifically at districts. And we talk about the use of overlays in the downtown. And then we look at some of our other commercial nodes throughout the city, the secondary ones, you know, Y down, Handley and other areas where there aren't overlay districts. But they, I think, within the comprehensive plan, looking at those as maybe sub areas would likely happen with more detailed analysis. White on Handley comes to mind as an easy one because there's existing provisions of the code that really directly conflict with the uses you see there, such as residential being allowed above retail and restaurant uses is not allowed in the C one district, but we, that's pretty much what Y down Handley is. So that's like a low hanging fruit that I would expect something to be noted in a comprehensive plan as a goal of removing those conflicts and barriers. But then there's going to be larger, more conceptual ideas, especially as we look at our guiding principles of what equity is, what sustainability is to our community. That's where this comprehensive plan offers an opportunity for really widespread engagement to understand what those terms mean to us. That would be a lot harder to maybe achieve that widespread engagement on just, just the equity commission alone, trying to achieve it. So that's kind of where this plan will cover a variety of really targeted implementation steps and then more guiding conceptual principles.
Thank you.
Well, I just have a couple of questions. Well, one is a question, one is comment. So the, on the guiding principles, that's really, that's a really critical part of this whole thing, getting it started. And so how will those principles be developed? Who will develop those and how, and will there be public engagement around those then, once there's some initial ideas or?
Yes, there, there'll be public engagement. So usually the first kind of phase of these comprehensive plans is really data gathering and analysis. And so some of the initial conversations that we can have through that are creating the, the interactions that would start to have the conversation where people feel, start to feel comfortable answering some of those tougher questions that communities have to face. So that first phase will be important. Maybe in the, in the end of it, we won't know exactly the, the wording of our principles, our guiding principles for equity and sustainability. But we're at least, the goal is to at least establish those relationships where people start feeling comfortable having those conversations. We'll have, have kind of a, a general idea of where we're headed. And then that will allow us to make sure that our more specific engagement throughout the next few phases of the project will allow us to dig in a little bit deeper to establish, use those as a lens when we're looking at really specific land use policies or more specific questions related to access and transportation elements. And then ultimately, in the draft of the plan, the final kind of end stages is when the wording will probably more be flushed out specifically for those.
And there, there really isn't any formal process for the board to give input on those. It's just if we're happen to be in the audience during public engagement or something like that?
Right. I don't think through the public engagement, you'll, all of the, even the steering committee meetings, those, those are open meetings. So if you're not a member of the steering committee directly, you, you can still be there and hearing, participating in terms of listening in on the meeting. But I don't think there, there's going to be anything through the process as specific of us necessarily putting up a sentence and then gaining feedback on the wording of that. You know, that's more kind of the end of the process. When we look at the draft plans, the steering committee might provide some feedback at that level. And then it'll be presented to the Plan Commission. But you all are welcome to participate and should participate in all elements of the public engagement throughout that entire process. So there's, even though you're not the adopting authority, there's, there's opportunities for you to still participate as an important part of the public and ultimately an important part of the policy side of the city.
Right, okay. And then my comment just is based on our experience with waste collection and people ability to learn about it or, you know, the success of our public awareness campaign. I, I, I would love to see like the, your plan is for getting the word out on this. Because it's, it's, I, I can see, obviously, you want to engage a broad, a broad scope here of our, of all kinds of stakeholders, all kinds of cohorts. And I, I think it's very hard to get people to be aware, engage. Are you going to have an online tool for people to engage with and give input on things that are discussed in, in the meetings? I just think the outreach, it has to, I mean, I, I'm getting in the weeds, but we need to put signs up, you know, yard signs all over town. You know, people just aren't paying attention and that's okay. But, you know, we really want that input so that when we get down the road at Handley and Y down, whatever we start trying to do is not Matt Lester.
Yeah, I mean, you're, that's correct, absolutely. The, a lot of the details of that planning will be something that will be worked out with the consultant team that we choose. That's part of, you know, what, when we interview them, getting an idea of how they've been able to achieve that kind of outreach success with a variety of groups. So right now, I can't tell you exactly what it would look like, but we have started conversations with Gabby, understanding the, the bang the table aspect of our website and other elements of it to make sure that we're prepared to have those conversations with consultant to ultimately outline a good path forward for engagement. But it will, when you talk about a, a community, especially people who've lived in a community for a long time, engaging them, everyone has their kind of method of how they get the data, the information from the city. So some people, you know, they look for the city views mailing and that's how they get their information for a few months. Some check the website on a regular basis. So we're going to definitely have to utilize all the platforms available to us to make sure that we're reaching everyone.
It'll be, it's going to be hard, yeah. Okay, any other comments or? All right, very good. We can, thank you, Anna. That was great. And we can move on to the Maryland Bike Lane.
All right, so that's the second conversation here is the Bike Lane Review. So I'll go through this report just a little bit. I know everybody had it in advance and then we'll open it up for discussion. But we've had the bike lanes open on Maryland just over fourteen months. And we did say that after a year of use, we would come back and have this conversation and talk about how they're functioning. So we'll just offer up a few observations that we've made over the past fourteen, fifteen months. There have been no reported accidents or incidents involving pedestrians, cyclists or vehicles within or as a result of the bike lanes. So Chief Smith and the Police Department went back through all the reports over that period and could not find anything in their system related to the bike lanes, which is good. And then we made some anecdotal observations. So the lane reduction on the westbound side of Maryland, and this is one of the, the big concerns you hear out there. It's appeared to result in slower traffic flow overall. So if you travel that on a regular basis, we've, we certainly have observed that it's moving slower than it did before the bike lanes were there. While there's been no degradation of service, so we haven't observed people waiting for multiple lights over and over again as the results of the bike lanes being there. If there's a delivery truck or you have somebody that's not very good at parallel parking, maybe that's going to take multiple attempts in order to park their vehicle within that travel lane, that could certainly impact the flow of traffic. But the bike lanes themselves, reducing it to just that one lane, absent a delivery truck or somebody trying to park, traffic is still flowing through that section of Maryland Avenue. We have the bollards that delineate the bike lanes from the lane of travel for vehicles. And those are an operational burden for our staff. They have to go out and manually remove all of the bollards when the winter comes because we can't plow snow to the curb. If those, those bollards are there, and then when spring comes around, we go ahead and put them back out. But when they are out, we can't get a street sweeper all the way up against the curb. So I know we got, we did receive a couple of concerns just about the leaves and, and the sort of debris that accumulates within that bike lane. So that requires us to go in manually again with leaf blowers or, or other tools in order to clear that out. So that is one of the drawbacks of having the bike lane delineated. The reason those are there and the reason they're effective is, is what we saw back when the bike lanes were initially installed, which was, the delineators came out after they had been in about a month or so. And then we had people parking up against the curb instead of parking in the designated spaces. So they were parking in the bike lane essentially and blocking that, that path. We passed that ordinance that prohibited parking within a bike lane, and that's something we've enforced on a regular basis. We also had a lot of public education and then additional signage along the bike lane. I, and our observation since that time is that that condition has improved. And if you drive down the street now, you know, the bollards are out and you'll see that people are parked in the correct spot. So that's something that just took some education over time and, and people doing it and getting used to parking in a new area. And then finally, we don't have an accurate count of cyclists utilizing the bike lanes. Again, anecdotally, I've observed people riding them. I've, I've ridden them, you know, ridden in the bike lane. Personally, I know people have utilized them. We don't know to what extent that's occurring, though. We don't have a, a formal count at this point. So as far as the, the traffic counts, though, on Maryland, we probably won't do that again until all of those lanes are restored. Not just on Maryland where we have the bike lane that's currently interrupted at the Bemis and Place development, but also we need Forsyth to be open because Forsyth Lane Closure associated with the Forsyth Point Development is definitely sending more traffic over to the Maryland side. So we need to get a real true count of what the traffic flow and the traffic count on Maryland is. And until that construction is complete, that's going to be difficult to do. We also have the whole element where office occupancy isn't what it was prior to the pandemic. So if all of the offices were back at one hundred percent occupancy, that would certainly increase the flow on Maryland and we're not sure how that would impact or how the bike lanes would impact that with the single lane of travel when you go westbound. So that's something we're going to have to observe going forward. So staff's recommendation at this point in time is just to continue to monitor the bike lanes and also have a broader community discussion through that livable communities master plan, which is coming up. So we are going to be discussing bike and pedestrian facilities and the network itself. So there's certainly going to be more conversation on that. But at this point in time, we can't find any real detriment that's impeding traffic or causing a safety concern where we would recommend a removal at this point in time. So with that, I'll, I'll open it up to you and the board. Absolutely. And then we do have our Director Public Works, Matt Malik, is here tonight, along with Chief Smith from the Police Department.
Hey, guys, any comments, Rich?
My only comment is I, I would like that if we are not going to do anything, that we make sure we've communicate that we've looked at it and for the reasons you've cited, we are keeping it as is. So I, I, we said we would do, look at it after twelve months. We ought to say that we did look at it and we're not going to do anything right now, at least.
We've got a city views coming up. I know that because I have to write something, I'll do in a week or so. So we could put something in that. I, I can't think of a, a really better way to let people know. I mean, unless anybody else has ideas. That'll come out in the spring, okay? Ira, any comments, questions?
Yeah, I mean, city views would probably be the best way to let people know that we've done the annual review and we've come up with the best answers to the questions that most people have. And I think that's fine. And I think it's important to, I, I, you know, I, you know, this question about, about use, I think, is something that the public keeps wanting to talk about or at least make comments about whether they're anecdotal or, or anything else. And, you know, I, I just want to make a comment about this on the record that as far as use goes, I know it's been used, I see it, but, but, but I don't think that really is the, the bit, the major crux of this. Because if you have a bike lane that we, this is our first real bike lane downtown, we don't have any, you know, we haven't done any adding to these, this in terms of connectivity and creating something bigger out of this. And so I, I, I appreciate what David put together in terms of his list. I think it's a, these are, these are good answers, good questions to ask and good answers to those questions. I'm just not particularly interested in how many people are using it at this point. So that's my comment.
Good. Bridget?
Um, I, you know, I think the observations by staff were good. I, I myself am on Maryland many, many times. I don't, I'm probably, I would guess from the people in this room, I am on Maryland the most, just given my trips to and from school and the center and I am on Maryland constantly. Chris even sent me because it drives, you know, the traffic lights and stuff, you know, which again keeps traffic slow. But Chris, my husband, like it makes him crazy, but although he loves the bike lanes. But I will just say, I think, I think the observations really are good in terms of understanding because we really don't know what traffic's going to be like. Once we kind of get all the lanes back from Forsyth, I know getting to the high school has been a nightmare this fall. And I know a lot of parents have been moved to Maryland in order, because you literally couldn't get down Forsyth. And there is a line all the way to almost Forest Park Parkway to turn left into the high school when those lanes were closed. So I just think there's a lot going on before we start making any big decisions about Maryland. I will also say, I just want to reiterate to what the bike lane has accomplished is I, unlike many people's observations, I do consistently see people using this bike lane. And also it is accomplishing the fact that people don't, people can't drive forty miles an hour down Maryland anymore. They can't. And that's a good thing, you know. I will say, the wonderful woman who owns Happy Up actually says that because people drive slower, they can actually see her shop a little bit better now. So, so for all those reasons and just, you know, I think it will be important, as people have already mentioned, the communication, because I, Gary and I constantly get communications from our residents asking about evaluation of this. So I think it'll be important to communicate that, yeah.
Good, I agree.
I don't have much to add. I think it's a, it, it's a very good step for our community. And the connectivity, Ira, you're right, as things develop more, we'll really, we'll really see it and as, as the city settles into a, some type of norm as well. So the, the publicizing that and that it ties into the local communities, the bike and the pedestrian study, I think, is, is, is great. Makes sense.
Becky, comments?
Yeah, I supported this bike lane as a resident before I was on the board. And I use the bike lane and I think it's great. I'm pleased that we are seeing use of it in these general positive impacts. And that's all. Thanks.
Alderman Fader?
Oh, yeah, I would echo the idea about the communication and I think we might consider, I'm not a communications person, but this is one of those things where like a Q and A approach might work well because we all hear the same questions over and over again. And to be able to address the question directly as opposed to a narrative that just says this is what we're doing, but something that addresses the questions. But I think all this makes a lot of sense as recently as at the last meeting I went to about the apartment project. Someone stopped me and said, I wish I had a buck for every time I've heard this, you know, it's an accident waiting to happen. Well, I mean, the reality is, and I respect people's concerns, but the fact is accident hasn't happened. I mean, that's the point. I mean, the facts speak for themselves. We haven't had accidents. I understand why people are concerned. But I think after fourteen months, I think those concerns, I think, have been adequately addressed. And certainly, there's lots of reasons not to do anything different now. We have to keep assuring the community because there are people who care a lot that we're going to continue to look at this very seriously. But to do something about it now doesn't make any sense. We should explain what we're talking about tonight in some cogent form to the public so they know what's going on.
We can like to clarify that most of the comments that I hear are very positive and not a lot of discussion. Just like, you know, it's a good thing that we're getting, we're getting to the stage of the city operations.
Yeah, things are certainly getting better in terms of comments.
Can I, Mayor, I'm sorry too. I just want to clarify too, and maybe Chief could help with this because we get communications all the time from residents about the bike lanes. Somebody did contact Gary and I that there, I think there, we, there was an accident in the bike lane. I don't think there was any physical injuries, but I think there was some damage to a car. It was back in September, Chief. I don't. I think, no, I think it was a bike and an automobile. And I only say that because the resident who contacted us specifically.
We, we heard, we heard about it.
Yeah, so, and I don't, I don't, I know that there weren't any injuries, but just so that, you know, it doesn't come out that there was nothing. It sounds like there was something back in September. So, but.
Might have been on Nextdoor, by the way. It was on one, it was on some communication.
It was, I thought. It was, I thought it was a weekly report.
Okay, good. Just in case. I'm glad you brought that up. Okay, great. Um, yeah, I don't really have anything to add. I agree with what everyone said and um, I do think, you know, the bike, having bike lanes in our business district, if possible, makes us you know, more welcoming. And that's one of our overarching goals because we're trying to provide activities for people that are young and for families and we we want to, we want to be that city. So um, I agree, we don't have much connectivity, but honestly, that's not really our fault. So we need to, I I do remind our other mayors nearby that they need to connect to us. Um, but it does connect to the uh Great Rivers uh Greenway, you know, path. So that's good. And um, we will see, we'll, I look forward to seeing, you know, how the community engages around this during that bike heads planning process. I think that'll be really enlightening. So I think we'll hear a lot more positive things then than at least I here now. So, all right, great. Good, thank you. Um, we have a few minutes until seven, and so we can just take a break and do whatever. And um, we'll reconvene right at seven.
That would look so good. I mean, like, that seems like something like
The Gary Postvius response. Thanks, Perry.
We're still broadcasting. All right. Well, welcome to our seven o'clock portion of the meeting here tonight. And um, we'll ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Alderman Lynch?
Here.
Alderman Berkowitz?
Here.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Here.
Alderwoman Buse?
Here.
Alderwoman Patel?
Here.
Alderman Fader?
Here.
Here, Harris?
Yeah.
City Manager Gibson?
Here.
The Attorney O'Keefe?
Here.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, now I'd like to call for the approval of the minutes from December thirteenth and need a motion.
I will move to approve the minutes from December thirteenth.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. And now's the time on the agenda for public requests and petitions. So if there's someone in our audience, either online or here that has comment or question about something that's not covered in this agenda, um, now's your chance. So I'm looking to see if any hands are raised anywhere. And I don't see any. So we will move on to the public hearing for renewable energy.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing to consider amending Article twenty-eight Renewable Energy Systems of the City's zoning regulations to revise the location requirements and create an administrative review process. In May twenty twenty-two, the City Sustainability Committee drafted a recommendation to the Plan Commission and Architectural Review Board to consider changes to the Renewable Energy System Regulations to allow for expanded installation of solar panels. Multiple discussion sessions have been held since then to gather feedback and direction of potential modifications. The following goals have guided the amendments drafted by staff. First, expand opportunities for installation of solar panels and other renewable energy systems to further the sustainability goals of the city and community. Secondly, remove barriers for installation of renewable energy systems that conform to standard criteria by providing a path for administrative review and approval. And third, identify historic context considerations and additional criteria for review to ensure continued protection of neighborhood and architectural character. The Plan Commission considered this request at its meeting on December nineteenth and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff recommends that the Board of Alderman approve the amendment as proposed. Uh, we do have Anna Crane, our Director of Planning and Development Services here this evening to answer any questions. Uh, but I did receive one question of in advance of the meeting from Alderman Fader, uh, just about the different approval types that are contained.
Perhaps I should open the public hearing as well and request proof of publication.
There we go. All right. So um, there are really three different approval types that are contained within this ordinance. The first one is an administrative approval. So that's essentially a staff review. And if the application meets all the requirements in the regulation, uh, then it's approved. It doesn't have to go on to any boards or anything beyond that. Uh, then we go into the permit issuing process. So for an administrative review, uh, we will do that for residential ground mounted and building mounted uh energy systems. So solar panels uh, on a roof of the building, uh, for an example. Also, non-residential building mounted uh systems. So solar panels on non-residential buildings are also subject to administrative review. The second level is an ARB review. And for an ARB review, uh, there's a section in this ordinance that talks about alternative compliance. Anything that would fall under that, anything that kind of falls into a gray area or there's question about it, uh, ARB would actually step in uh, and take the review at that point in time. Staff also has the ability during one of those administrative reviews to refer the matter to Architectural Review Board. So if there's something unique, if there's some sort of question as to the application and whether or not it meets the requirements, uh, staff could trigger that um, that review by ARB. And then finally, projects with historic context. So the final section uh that's in the proposed ordinance talks about historic context uh, in kind of the uh, what constitutes historical context. So if it's a building that's listed on the National Register, if it's within a National Register District and it's a contributing structure, and those particular cases, ARB would need to do the review. Finally, there's a conditional use process that's spelled out uh in this ordinance. And that applies to non-residential ground mounted units. So if you have a commercial property and you want some sort of um, solar panels that aren't affixed to the top of the building, but maybe they might be out in a, in a required front yard or in the rear yard, wherever. Uh, if it's on a commercial property, it has to go through the CUP process. So that would be the Plan Commission or ARB and also the Board of Alderman. Uh, and the same is true for wind energy systems. So this ordinance does allow uh wind energy. However, any application for that has to go before the Board of Alderman. Uh, so we have an administrative process, we have an ARB process, and we have a CUP process depending on the the type of application. And all that, that, all of that is spelled out in the ordinance.
Very good. Thank you. Um, I'd like to open it up now for discussion. Any questions or comments from the audience here or online? So you know, hands? Any questions or comments from the board? Rich, we'll start with you. Nothing? Ira? Okay, Bridget. Uh, was Ira? Oh, no. Here he is. Sorry, Ira. No questions or comment?
I, I, no, I don't have any questions or comments. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Um, I was just going to make a comment, you know, just with respect to the um approval process through staff. So at ARB, we approved because this wasn't in place yet, we approved some solar panels on the top of the new Bank of America building. Um, so, which is fantastic. They're doing it all around the country. The gentleman who was on the phone doing it was talking about how he's going from place to place. Um, so that's fantastic. But in the future, um, staff would be able to do that without it coming. So I think it's, you know, I think it's a um, everybody at the Plan Commission was really supportive and um, I'm just really excited that we'll be able to get this through quicker um at the staff level. And then if necessary, um, you know, it can come before the, before ERV. But I thought Anna did a great job.
Yeah, very good. Great. Susan, any comment?
I just want to commend the Sustainability Committee and the Planning Commission and everybody who worked on this and and getting it done because as, as you pointed out, it's, it's time and it's happening anyway and so make it much more streamlined and effective.
Alderwoman Patel, anything?
I'm just going to pile on because I really appreciate, um, you know, I mean, the Sustainability Committee didn't know like how this should be done. They just knew that it was consistent with like what we value and want to see more of and want to make it easier for people to put on solar panels. Um, and I really appreciate the way that Anna and her staff approached this and um, because I think anything we can do to ease the process for our residents to invest um, in their homes in general and specifically when it's sustainable like this or innovative, that's awesome. Good work.
Gary?
Um, yeah, my only comment, I think David's explanation of these three levels of review is very helpful and is very helpful tonight, but it's not very helpful to the extent it's not reflected in the ordinance anywhere. It is, of course, if you read through it, you you get there, but I would think to not to oppose Anna to think about it, but I would think a very simple chart that would say, you know, these are the three levels of review and this is what triggers each one of these. For those who want to use the ordinance in the future, I think it would be very helpful to have something like that. Uh, I, I, I certainly think it would, it would make it easier. And and the other thing that, and I think David and I talked about it, as I understand, typically when things go through the ARB, that's the end of the process. The Board of Alderman does not get involved, except if there is an appeal. And it seems to me particularly as this thing sort of works its way through, it's not inconceivable that we might have somebody who's a homeowner who doesn't like the placement of a a particular solar panel and at least would like to have the right to go forward and appeal that. And as I understand it, in fact, that right is there because where this, where this is in the ordinance, there actually is an appeal process. Um, it's just not in this ordinance, but it is part of the broader zoning section. So I think it's important somehow to convey as this thing gets rolled out that there still is an appeal process. If a homeowner is unhappy with an ARB decision, it would go under the right circumstances to the, to the board, to our board. Uh, again, under certain circumstances. So I think we just want to make that again, under certain circumstances. So I think we just want to make that clear to people that that appeal right is still there.
Yep, like, great point. Um, we can do that, I'm sure.
Yes, we can do that. We also are in the process of updating it. We have a lot on our website, different kind of submittal guides based on different topics. And with our new online platform for submitting permits, we're updating those guides to align. So, and talking with what you're mentioning, not being in the ordinance, about what type of project and what type of process it might go through. I think we can cover that in the updated guide related to renewable energy applications as opposed to putting it within the actual code.
That'll work as well, sure.
Very good. All right, anything else from anyone? No? Okay, um, I will now close the public hearing. Alderman Lynch.
I'll introduce Bill sixty-nine thirty-four to approve an amendment to Chapter four oh five, Article twenty-eight. Get that right. Renewable energy systems to allow for expanded installation of solar panels to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six nine three four, first reading, in ordinance amending Chapter four oh five zoning regulations, Article twenty-eight Renewable Energy Systems, to revise locations for energy system installation, establish an administrative review process, and other modifications related thereto.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good.
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill sixty-nine thirty-four on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
And I'll introduce Bill sixty-nine thirty-four to approve an amendment to Chapter four oh five, Article twenty-eight Renewable Energy Systems, to allow for expanded installation of solar panels to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
All right, any discussion? Hey, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six nine three four, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance amending Chapter four oh five zoning regulations, Article twenty-eight Renewable Energy Systems, to revise locations for energy system installation, establish an administrative review process, and other modifications related thereto.
Alderman Lynch.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, I will open the public hearing and request proof of publication for the Chapter four two five sign regulations.
Yes, Mayor, this is a public hearing to consider amending Chapter four twenty-five sign regulations of the city's land use regulations to reorganize sign types by zoning district, clarify definitions, and sign allowance and other modifications. Over the years, case law has shaped how signs are regulated. One of the more well-known decisions being Reed versus Town of Gilbert in two thousand and fifteen, which struck down the sign code as being content-based and therefore a violation of the First Amendment. Since then, many communities have taken to rewriting sign codes to remove content-based regulations. Staff has rewritten sections of Chapter four twenty-five to remove content-based regulations. The proposed regulations do not significantly modify the sign types, sizes, or locations that are currently allowed, but rather reorganizes the code to align with current best practices. The proposed regulations create consistency throughout zoning districts and will help contribute to a certain character and support necessary wayfinding and messaging. The proposed regulations also provide for clarity in how sign areas are calculated and determined. Diagrams have been added to Section four twenty-five point zero two zero definitions to show how the calculation is applied to different building sizes and layouts, as well as different sign shapes. Many traditional sign regulations measure sign area using a rectangle based on the height and length of a sign. The proposed regulations allow for the sign area to be measured using the boundary of a sign for various shapes, which can encourage creativity in shapes while maintaining a standard size allowed. The Plan Commission considered this request at its meeting on December fifth and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the amendment as proposed.
All right, I'll open the discussion. Any questions or comments from the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll move on to the board. Rich, any questions, comments?
Um, no real questions. I just think this is great. This is, signs were always confusing when they came to the ARB. So I'm, I think clarifying it is terrific. Thanks.
Very good. Ira, any comment?
I concur with my fellow Aldermen on the confusion and the difficulty in dealing with signs at ARB. And I think this, I welcome this, this clarification. Thank you.
Anything?
No comment.
Thanks, Anna. Susan, any comment?
Good work, thank you.
No comment, no comment. Alderman Fader?
All good.
Okay, very good. I will then close the public hearing.
I'll introduce Bill sixty-nine thirty-five to approve an amendment to Chapter four two five, sign regulations of the city's land use regulations to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six nine three five, first reading, in ordinance amending Chapter four two five sign regulations to reorganize sign types and regulations by zoning districts, clarify definitions and other modifications related thereto.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Right.
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill sixty-nine thirty-five on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
Then I will introduce Bill sixty-nine thirty-five to approve an amendment to Chapter four two five, sign regulations of the city's land use regulations to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hey, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six nine three five, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance amending Chapter four two five sign regulation by reorganizing sign types and regulations by zoning districts, clarify definitions and other modifications related thereto.
Alderman Lynch.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along, I will open the public hearing and request proof of publication for honeymoon chocolates.
This is a public hearing to consider an application for a conditional use permit submitted by Cameron Loyette of Starry Night LLC, doing business as Honeymoon Chocolates, to allow for the operation of a twenty-five hundred square foot cafe with an outdoor dining area. Honeymoon chocolates will be open seven days a week from two P M. to ten P M. The cafe concept is dessert-based to serve drinks and food that incorporate or pairs well with the chocolate created in-house. The applicant has also applied for a liquor license. The cafe will have forty seats and will continue to operate the existing outdoor dining area. The proposed cafe is located within the existing retail chocolate shop. Off-street parking is not required for restaurants located in the central business district measuring less than three thousand square feet. Deliveries will be made in the morning via street parking in front of the restaurant. The restaurant will continue to use the existing recycling and garbage pickup services. The Plan Commission considered this request at its meeting on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-two, and voted unanimously to recommend approval as requested. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a conditional use permit for the operation of honeymoon chocolates located at sixteen North Central, per the conditions outlined in the resolution. And the applicant, Cameron Loyette, appears to be online.
Oh, okay. All right, Cameron, are you with us?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, great. Well, this is a fun, sounds like a fun, exciting new business for us. Can you kind of give us sort of the concept of what you're, what, what, you know, what it's gonna be like?
You bet. So as it stands now, we manufacture chocolate sweetened with honey. We've been selling throughout the country and throughout the world. We're in seven different countries right now. Sold with our chocolate that's all made here in Clayton. But we want to expand to have more of a footprint here in St. Louis. So doing so through either pastries, alcoholic beverages like a chocolate martini or wine and whiskey pairings, partnering with some, some local distilleries like Switzerland Spirits. It is our goal with, with this particular conditional use permit.
That sounds great. And I might have missed it, but when are, when are you thinking of opening?
So we're, we're, we're open right now, but I would still, I would love.
Converting, yeah.
I'd love to convert for, for Valentine's Day if possible.
Sounds like a plan. Okay, great. Well, we're excited for you and thanks for coming to the meeting and listening. And I'll ask the public if there are any questions, comments, and any questions or comments from our board.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to say that I've been over there a bunch of times. Cameron is a wonderful person to talk to, but his, his product is fantastic. It's a great, it's a great product. You all ought to go over there. He's got a nice, nice restaurant, nice indoor area to sit and, and enjoy the, enjoy the chocolates and then some ice cream as well. So I, I think it's a great addition to the city. So thank you, Cameron.
Wonderful. Anything, Bridgette? Anything over here? No. Okay, very good. All right, everybody's excited. Thank you again. And I will close.
Chocolate.
What?
Everybody wants chocolate.
Everybody loves chocolate. Yeah, you know, really, you should have come to the meeting and given us some, given us some samples, but there'll be more meetings that you could come to. So that's good. Um, all right, I will close the public hearing then. And Alderman Lynch.
I'll move to approve Resolution number two thousand and twenty-three dash oh one, granting a conditional use permit for Starry Night Cafe LLC, doing businesses honeymoon chocolates at sixteen North Central Avenue.
Second.
Hey, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, very good. Thank you. And we can move on to the City Manager's report.
Yes, Starry Night, Starry Night Cafe LLC, doing business as Honeymoon Chocolates, is requesting a liquor license to sell all kinds of intoxicating liquor at retail by the drink, including Sundays at sixteen North Central Avenue. The police and planning departments have completed a review of the application and support issuance of the requested license. The applicant has chosen not to submit a petition from surrounding property owners and first-floor tenants. As a result, they are aware that this application must have a supermajority vote of five board members in order to be approved. Staff recommends passing a motion to approve the liquor license to sell all kinds of intoxicating liquor at retail by the drink, including Sundays.
Hey, I'll open the discussion. I don't see any hands online. Anybody here have questions or comments? Okay, very good. Alderman Lynch.
I'll move to approve the liquor license for honeymoon chocolates at sixteen North Central Avenue.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. All right, very good. And moving on to the marijuana text, Mr. City Manager.
Yes, on November eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, Missouri voters approved an amendment to Missouri Constitution relating to the legalization, regulation, and taxation of marijuana. Section two point six, subsection five of Article fourteen of the Missouri Constitution authorizes the governing body of any local government to impose an additional sales tax and an amount not to exceed three percent on all tangible personal property retail sales of adult-use marijuana sold in the political subdivision, in addition to any and all other retail sales tax allowed by law if approved by voters of the political subdivision. The attached ordinance calls for an election for Clayton voters to consider an additional local sales tax of three percent on the retail sales of adult-use marijuana sold in the city. The proposition, known as Proposition M, would be placed on the April fourth, two thousand and twenty-three ballot and would read as follows. Shall the city of Clayton be authorized to impose an additional sales tax and an amount not to exceed three percent on all tangible personal property retail sales of adult-use marijuana sold in the city? Staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
Very good. All right, I'll open the discussion. Any questions from our audiences? Okay, Alderman Lynch, I mean, yeah, Alderman Lynch, I'm sorry. Yes. Do you have any comments or questions?
I don't. Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah. Ira?
No, no, glad, glad we're doing it.
Okay.
Um, I guess, you know, we don't have any dispensaries in Clayton, but, you know, we might. Is there any, are we gonna do any sort of PR effort? I mean, I'm not suggesting that we spend a lot of money sending anything out. Or are we just hoping that it, there'll be enough interest? I mean, I, I think a lot of other communities are doing this, so just assuming that maybe word of mouth will.
Sure.
Our residents will know.
Right, and I, I know we had interest as far as medical dispensaries. None of that materialized. The next step in this process is for us to go through our offenses section and also our zoning code to make sure that those are all up to date. So you'll be seeing more legislation come forward. But as far as dispensaries, I mean, that's, it's on the approved, you know, use list. So I'm sure there will be some interest out there. And if we certainly got a dispensary, then, you know, we would hope people would utilize it and pay the additional three percent.
Well, I think, you know, just like when any, when we put anything on the bill.
Tax proposition, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the tax proposition goes, I think everybody is putting this out there. So we'll communicate that it's gonna be out there. Of course, we can't put things out to go ahead and support it. But I think every city around us, for the most part, is gonna have this on the ballot, as well as, I'm sure that the county will have something on there as well. So.
Yeah.
It'll be out there. And everyone has named this across the state, Proposition M, so there's consistency there as well.
Okay, very good. Uh, let's see. Any other comments or questions?
I was gonna ask how the, how it got named. You got to choose that. You basically answered.
That's exactly right. So.
We get to ask.
There was a lot of conversation throughout the state, and then the Missouri Municipal League put out a recommendation that everyone used Proposition M for exactly that.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, very good. So any other discussion? All right, Alderman Lynch.
I'll introduce Bill sixty-nine thirty-six, levying an additional sales tax on sales of adult-use marijuana and calling for an election for voter approval to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Hey, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number six nine three six, first reading, in ordinance levying an additional sales tax on sales of adult-use marijuana and calling an election for voter approval of such tax.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill sixty-nine thirty-six on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
Then I'll introduce Bills sixty-nine thirty-six, levying an additional sales tax on sales of adult-use marijuana and calling for an election for voter approval to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number six nine three six, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance levying an additional sales tax on sales of adult-use marijuana and calling an election for voter approval of such tax.
Alderman Lynch.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. City Manager, the I T agreement.
Yes, this is a contract renewal for technology services to be provided by the city of Clayton to the city of Brentwood on a contract basis. The previous three-year intergovernmental agreement for technology services expires, expires on February first, two thousand and twenty-three. We have developed the attached renewal agreement that outlines the services to be provided by Clayton and the cost to be paid by Brentwood. Under the current agreement, the city of Brentwood pays thirty-five percent of Clayton's total cost to operate our I T department. Since the start of the current agreement in two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twenty, we have tracked our activities and spent, and time spent supporting each city. We each, we also provide this particular service to the city of Richmond Heights. This data was taken into consideration, and this new agreement will lower the fees that the city of Brentwood will pay to thirty-one percent. We have also budgeted a small contingency for unknown items which may come up throughout the year. The approval of this agreement will initially extend our technology services contract for an additional eighteen months. Upon expiration of the initial term, this agreement will automatically renew for an additional three-year term with fees being reassessed at that time. The city of Brentwood will have its first reading of this agreement at their January third, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the attached ordinance, authorizing the city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement, the city of Brentwood, for Clayton to provide technology services. And the other thing I'll point out with the partnership with Richmond Heights is right now Brentwood and Richmond Heights have contract terms that don't match. In the way the formula is set up, is basically the three cities split the cost of those services. The intent of the initial eighteen-month period is to get Richmond Heights and Brentwood on the same contractual schedule, so that if one of these cities was to make a material change, it would change the cost for the other cities. We can talk about that, negotiate it, and also get it approved at the same time. So if you're wondering why we have a strange eighteen-month initial term, that's the reasoning behind it.
Very good. I can open the discussion. I see Larry is here, if you have questions for him. So I'll start over here.
Um, yeah, I guess I have a, the question I have is if we're splitting this.
Um, yeah, I guess I have a, the question I have is if we're splitting this somewhat evenly, um, but it would, it, it would surprise me if all three cities had exactly the same needs um, on their technology at any one time. In other words, their, um, systems are all being renewed, or some system being renewed one year versus another year or another period, so I guess I'm just, how do you get that all to even out?
Uh, but overall, it, um, it evens out in the end, as, as far as system upgrades or system implementations or audio/video, uh, implementations in the council chambers. It, it evens out. We, we track all of this in a few different places. We have our own time management system where we track exactly what we do each day, what city, uh, we spend our time in. Uh, our project management platform, we share point, we go back by, you know, city by city, see how much time we're, we're spending there, and then our help desk system, we can see who's putting those calls in and, uh, who's taking up our time. And, and you're right, not each city requires the same amount of our IT staff. It's heavily weighted towards Clayton. Clayton has more users. Clayton has more technology than the other two cities, and that's why I believe Clayton is around a forty-five percent, uh, is what they pay for out of the operational cost of our department right currently. And what David said about the code terming is really helpful in that regard, because what we found ourselves, every time these would renew, they would possibly change by a few percentage points, one way or another, but it left the other two cities to make up the difference. And so now that they're all renewing at the exact same time, we can right-size those costs, uh, across the board.
Great, thank you.
Ira, or? Ira, any questions?
I know, I know. We've done this before many times, and I, I like the fact that we're doing it. It's, it's a, it's a good program. Thank you.
Yeah, we began supporting them in twenty seventeen, uh, so six years, and we're going into our seventh year with the city of Brentwood specifically, and I feel it's been pretty, um, it's been mutually beneficial to all part, all participants, including the city of Richmond Heights.
Right. Bridget?
Oh, yeah, Larry already answered my question.
Yeah.
Okay.
All good, thank you. Um, is this the amount that they pay us? Is it based on a fully loaded uh, cost? Fully loaded, you know, all the benefit, all the total.
Yeah. Yeah, when we figured it out, I worked with finance, this, this past agreement was with Kayla. I worked and we, you know, we consider all operational costs from benefits, salaries, uh, even down to laptops and cell phones and our vehicles, and mileage that we reimburse and everything else. Uh, we try and think of every operational cost that we have, and that's also why I forget which page it is on that agreement. There's an overhead piece that is usually three to five percent overhead, and that's to cover costs. That's hard to quantify, like our office space that we're, but we're trying to, uh, make up for that in that overhead piece, things like that.
Okay, good. That's great. All right, um, I don't think there's any further questions for you, so you can sit down again. Um, Alderman Lince?
I'll introduce bill sixty-nine thirty-seven to approve the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement to provide technology services to the city of Brentwood to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine-three-seven, first reading, an ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Brentwood, with the city of Clayton to provide technology services to the city of Brentwood.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill sixty-nine thirty-seven on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill sixty-nine thirty-seven to approve the renewal of an intergovernmental agreement to provide technology services to the city of Brentwood to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine-three-seven, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance authorizing an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Brentwood for the city of Clayton to provide technology services to the city of Brentwood.
Alderman Lince?
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the lockers at the outdoor pool.
Yes, the Shaw Park Aquatic Center was renovated in two thousand and three, at which time new lockers were installed on the locker rooms, pool deck, and the lifeguard office. These lockers are approximately twenty years old and in need of replacement. In some cases, the lockers are missing doors and hinges, hinges are failing, both of which use parts that are no longer available for repairing the lockers. Approximately eighty-eight percent of the current lockers in each locker room measure twelve by twelve, and all lockers on the pool deck are twelve by twelve as well. Staff often hears from users that the size is too small to store their belongings. In addition, each public locker requires a fee of twenty-five cents per use. Due to the cost and inconvenience, many participants simply leave their belongings on the pool deck or in unlocked lockers. Staff agrees that a vinolic, I, I guess is how you say this, I'm gonna say it's a plastic-like material. Yeah, there we go, with a keyless lock feature is the best solution for lockers at the Shaw Park Aquatic Center. The material is more durable than metal lockers in a pool environment, and a reconfigured layout will provide better-sized lockers, uh, for storage. In addition, each locker offers a, either a combination code that can be reset with each user, uh, free of charge, or the ability to bring your own lock. Grid is the provider of these lockers with keyless entry in the St. Louis area. They also participate in Sourcewell, which is a nationwide purchasing organization for public sector procurement that offers an extensive portfolio of solutions and partnerships. As a result, they have provided a bid for the project, factoring in a twenty percent discount from the normal price of their products. The full project scope includes removal and disposable, and disposal of the existing lockers in the locker rooms, pool deck, and lifeguard office, as well as installation of the new lockers in these areas. The project should take approximately one to two weeks to complete. Funding for this project has been included in the city's IRF for twenty, uh, twenty-three in the amount of eighty-one thousand, six hundred dollars. The total cost of the project will be seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen dollars. It is recommended that we include a five percent contingency of three thousand, six hundred ninety dollars to be used to cover unforeseen expenses. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve an ordinance allowing for the purchase and installation of new lockers at the Shaw Park Aquatic Center through Grid at the amount of seventy-three thousand, eight hundred seventeen dollars plus a contingency of three thousand, six hundred ninety dollars. And Tony Searing, our Director of Parks and Recreation, is here this evening if you have any questions about the project.
Very good. All right, we'll start over here and open the discussion. Any questions for Tony? Ira, questions?
Well, um, I don't, we covered it last night on Parks and Rec, so I, I don't have any questions here.
Okay, very good.
Tony, I was just gonna ask, are the lockers gonna be different shapes like they are at, um, the center?
Yes, they will be different shapes. They'll be larger, so there will actually be fewer of them, but, um, they're not being used as frequently, but there'll be a better size that you can fit an actual bag in as opposed to trying to cram something in a twelve-by-twelve box.
But will the, all the lockers be uniform in size, or?
Yes. Yeah, sorry.
I'm like, okay, great. And yes, this is, they are in bad need of replacement.
Yeah.
Good. Any, any, uh?
I had, I had one more, I did have one more question, uh, mayor.
Go ahead.
Uh, Tony, do you know, I mean, uh, you know, the, the prior lockers that, or the future prior lockers uh, required a, a fifty-cent payment for the use of the lockers, correct?
Uh, it was a quarter.
A quarter, yeah?
Yes.
Do you happen to know on any annual basis what, what we actually did receive from those quarters?
I do. Um, it's been getting less and less over the last, uh, several years, and it's less than two hundred dollars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm fully.
It used to be quite, quite a bit more than that, but yeah, it's, it's not substantial.
Had you considered a price increase because they're new?
No, we're really trying to, um, encourage people to lock their valuables, so we're giving them the, either combination code, or there are some that you can put your own lock on, but we, we want to encourage people to secure their belongings.
Yes, I, I understand.
So just to be clear, there will not be a fee to use.
Correct.
It'll be like at the center.
Yes.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other discussion or questions?
I just wanna say, I, I really like your thinking on this. This is really a smart way to go, so. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, Tony. Okay, Alderman Lince?
I'll introduce bill sixty-nine thirty-eight to approve the purchase and installation of lockers at the Shaw Park Aquatic Center to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine-three-eight, first reading, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for purchase and installation of lockers at Shaw Park Aquatic Center.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Uh, move the board give unit, give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill sixty-nine thirty-eight on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hey, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill sixty-nine thirty-eight to approve the purchase and installation of lockers at the Shaw Park Aquatic Center to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine-three-eight, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance authorizing an agreement for purchase and installation of lockers at Shaw Park Aquatic Center.
Alderman Lince?
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Hey. All right, Mr. City Manager, the Police Department Training Room.
Yes, this project will construct a permanent onsite training space for the Police Department to conduct training exercises at ten South Brentwood. The design of the space, which is located in the lower level of the police building, was coordinated between the Police Department and Public Works Facilities Division in twenty twenty-two. During design, there were modifications made to enhance the functionality of the space for conversion to use as a classroom setting, as well as modifications to the HVAC system that added to the estimated cost. Two bids were opened on November fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, and Pinnacle Contracting submitted the lowest responsive responsible base bid in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars. This project was placed on hold temporarily due to COVID in twenty twenty and was funded in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget at eighty-four thousand dollars. The increase in construction prices, uh, has resulted in an overage, therefore, an adjustment to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget may be requested to cover the increase. Uh, so that's something we'll monitor as we move forward. This is contained within the capital improvement plan, so we'll see how other projects, uh, if there are savings and, and we can make up the difference there. Uh, if not, this will be part of a future budget amendment. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve the ordinance authorizing a contract with Pinnacle Contracting for construction of the Police Department Training Room in the amount of ninety-eight thousand, two hundred thirteen dollars, plus a contingency of ten thousand dollars to cover expenditures to correct unknown issues that become apparent during the project. And Chief Smith is here to answer any questions you have about the project or the facility.
All right, I'll open the discussion. And I'll start over here. Any questions?
I, I, is the, I, I guess I'm confused about how the training room, and it works as a classroom. Is it, does the training room have equipment in it and that has to be moved in order to make it into a classroom?
Yeah, so it's gonna be an open floor with mats, kind of wrestling mats on it.
Okay.
But we're, we're also gonna be able to roll those mats out, roll them up, and then move desks in there and seating. Uh, we, we plan on hosting training with other agencies.
Okay.
That's one of the things, bringing instructors in and for, uh, the defensive tactics-type training we, we utilize. We also have that simulator now, and, uh, that'll be down in that room as well.
So that, so that's, I guess that's what I was thinking, is that the, the bigger equipment, like the simulator, aren't, isn't gonna be in the way of the, of the classroom, it's just.
Yeah, that, that simulator is just a screen with a projector and this computer attached to it.
Okay.
That's gonna be easy to move, move out of the way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh, Ira, any questions for Chief?
Yeah, Chief, um, so was there not a, we didn't, we, we didn't have a training room? There was no facility at the department for training? I mean?
No, there wasn't one, uh, uh, put into our current station, so we, um, we used, we're currently using a, an unfinished room. We improvised and found an unfinished room. Unfortunately, it's next to Larry's office. And so the walls are pretty thin, and he hears all the grunting and yelling and the, the, during the training, so there, there is that issue. Also, that, that, uh, current room doesn't have electricity in there. We have to run cables out the hallway for the simulator. Um, so it's, uh, yeah, it was, it's an unfinished room that, um, nobody found a use for, um, when we moved into our current location.
Okay, right, thanks.
Good, good question. Bridget, anything?
Susan?
Becky?
No, I'm just glad we're getting you a room that is more suited to, um, your value and skills.
Sure, thank you.
Well said. Alderman Fader?
I enjoyed my, my, my tour of the facility in the past, and I've, I've seen the space you use, and so I'm, I'm sure you need a new one, so I'm excited you're gonna get it.
That's right, you got to see the, uh, simulator, is that correct?
That's great.
Okay, um, I would just say if anybody would like to experience the simulator, it's very fun and a little scary, uh, you should take the Citizens Academy Police Training. I probably have the title of that wrong.
Well, it's the Citizens Academy, yes.
Yeah. You should, you should do it. When, when is the next one?
Uh, we run that from September through November.
Okay, so you have time to think about it and get up your courage. Yeah. It's great. All right, um, moving on then, um, Alderman Lince?
Introduce bill sixty-nine thirty-nine to approve a construction contract for the Police Department Training Room to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney?
Bill number sixty-nine-three-nine, first reading, an ordinance approving a construction contract with Pinnacle Contracting Incorporated for the Police Department Training Room.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill sixty-nine thirty-nine on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'll let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce bill sixty-nine thirty-nine to approve a construction contract for the Police Department Training Room to read for the second time by title only.
Any discussion? Oh, sorry, we did that simultaneously. Okay, uh, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine-three-nine, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving a construction contract with Pinnacle Contracting Incorporated for the Police Department Training Room.
Alderman Lince?
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz?
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew?
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse?
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel?
Aye.
Alderman Fader?
Aye.
Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Okay. Finally, we are getting to the Fire Department. Um, Mr. City Manager?
All right, the Station Alerting System is designed to utilize the digital data signals from the new computer-aided dispatcher CAD system at East Central Dispatch. Prior to any audible tone, a digital data packet will be sent to the fire station to pre-alert and dispatch crews. The system segregates alerts from, for the ambulance, ladder, engine, and chiefs. Recently, East Central Dispatch has updated their CAD system. With this upgrade, with this upgrade comes the ability for new technology for receiving the request for emergency services. The information received from dispatch will be in a computer-generated voice tone, so the firefighter is able to hear and understand the information being relayed. The Fire Station Alerting System allows for an automated dispatch message, and the selection and generation of tones is also an automated process. Overall, the automated system reduces the reliance on the primary fire dispatcher to select the appropriate tone and verbally announce the call for service. Through the Equipment Replacement Fund, a hundred and ten thousand dollars has been budgeted for this project. The cost of the hardware and installation in this contract is a hundred and eight thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and sixty-five cents. Staff recommends that the ordinance be approved. And Chief Rhodes and other members of the Fire Department are here this evening if you have any questions.
Glad to see you all here, by the way. Glad you came. Um, yeah, anybody, I'll go around. Any questions for the chief or anyone else? No, no. Ira, questions? No? No questions, okay. Looks like a slam dunk then. Uh, uh, Alderman Lince?
I'll introduce bill sixty-nine forty to approve the purchase of the Fire Station Alerting System to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of bill sixty-nine forty on the day of its introduction.
Second.
My turn.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine.
Sorry, we skipped you.
That's all perfectly all right. Bill number sixty-nine four-zero, first reading, an ordinance approving an agreement for purchase of a fire station alerting system and installation thereof.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Now, I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill sixty-nine forty on the day of its introduction.
And I'll second it again.
Oh, good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
I'll introduce Bill sixty-nine forty to approve the purchase of a fire station alerting system to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Discussion? Hey, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine four-zero, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving an agreement for purchase of a fire station alerting system and installation thereof.
Alderman Lins.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
All right, done deal. Mr. City Manager, the CCF MOU.
Yes, the City of Clayton has an agreement with the Clayton Community Foundation, or CCF, that went into effect on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten. It was subsequently amended July twelfth, two thousand and sixteen, and again on March twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one. The current agreement contains a funding provision stating that CCF will be expected to incur seventy-five percent of all costs associated with the administrator for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three and one hundred percent of all such costs thereafter. The restated agreement being considered this evening would provide for continued contributions from the City of Clayton to the Clayton Community Foundation through fiscal year two thousand and twenty-five. The requested contribution would be approximately fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three, and is projected to increase by three percent annually in both fiscal year twenty-four and fiscal year twenty-five. Half of the contribution would go towards the Executive Director's salary for work performed solely for the city. This would include ten hours of work per week related to research, grant writing, involvement with the Handley House, or other special projects. The other half of the contribution would go towards operational expenses such as insurance, service fees, utilities, supplies, and licenses. No portion of the contribution would be directly utilized for the solicitation of donations to CCF. Section eight point three is also new to the agreement and clarifies the roles of both entities. Staff recommends approval of the attached ordinance, and Alex Elmstead, Executive Director of CCF, appears to be online.
Okay, very good. I'll open the discussion. Alderman Lins, any questions or comments about this?
No, I think it's a good move forward, and I like the fact that we've got an end date to separate them, so. And I feel good about the way that we've separated and delineated the roles that Alex is going to play for the city.
Ira? Question, comment?
Yeah, it's a reasonable request. I, you know, I just think, look at the history of CCF and our relationship with them, and I think, you know, as a fledgling, I think the city participated quite a bit more in their operations, and I think that that has become less and less and less over the years. And so, you know, I think this is a reasonable request, and I'm in favor of it.
Bridget, anything?
No.
Okay, over here? Okay, great. Well, yeah, I just want to say thank you to the CCF for all the work they do on behalf of the city, enhancing our city. A lot of things we have in place would not be possible without their hard work. And so I'm happy to support this as well. And so, Alderman Lins.
I'm pleased to introduce Bill sixty-nine forty-one to approve amending and restating the memorandum of understanding between the City of Clayton and the Clayton Community Foundation to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine four-one, first reading, an ordinance approving an amended and restated memorandum of understanding between the City of Clayton and the Clayton Community Foundation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, very good.
I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill sixty-nine forty-one on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
Then I'll introduce Bill sixty-nine forty-one to approve amending and restating the memorandum of understanding between the City of Clayton and the Clayton Community Foundation to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine four-one, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance approving an amended and restated memorandum of understanding between the City of Clayton and the Clayton Community Foundation.
Alderman Lins.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
All right, Mr. City Manager, Bill number sixty-nine forty-two.
Yes, it is the last ordinance of the evening. At the Board of Aldermen meeting on September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, the Board approved ordinance number six-seven-seven-five, approving a memorandum of understanding between the City of Clayton, the International Association of Firefighters Local twenty-six sixty-five, and the Eastern Missouri Coalition of Police Fraternal Order of Police Lodge fifteen for specified pension enhancements. The enhancements include a one-time backdrop, which is a deferred retirement option program, a forward drop, and the purchase of military service credits. Per RSMO one oh five point six-six-five, the city engaged the services of BUCK, the plan's actuary, to develop a cost statement for the proposed enhancements, which was available for public inspection for the required forty-five-day period. Under the current plan, the anticipated employer cost on January first, two thousand and twenty-three is seven hundred thousand, or seven hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars, which is nine point eight four percent of covered payroll. With the enhancement, the anticipated employer cost on January first, two thousand and twenty-three is eight hundred thousand, fifty-four dollars, which totals eleven point one five percent of covered payroll. This results in an increase in total employer cost of sixty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. A ten-year employer cost was provided in the packet. Staff recommends approval of the Uniformed Employee Retirement Fund Plan Restatement and inclusion of the one-time backdrop, forward drop, and purchase of military service credits into the Uniformed Employees Pension Plan as drafted by the city's Pension Plan Attorney. The one thing I would point out is we talked about it being cost-neutral quite a bit. The one thing that this doesn't capture while we talk about the cost is also the associated savings with this type of program. Typically, or actually, in order to be eligible, an employee would have to be here for a long period of time. Those employees are typically at the high end of your pay scale, and then when they take the drop, when they elect to do that and retire at that point, that position is backfilled with somebody that's at the beginning of the range, which results in savings. So that additional sixty-one thousand dollars that we anticipate for this year, if we have individuals that utilize that backdrop, we will actually. The web's doing the math, all right. But we should be able to recover a lot, if not all of that amount, just through that attrition, so just wanted to point that out. And we do have Karen Dilber, in case there are any questions, our Director of Finance online this evening.
Hey, very good. I'll open the discussion, and I'll go around.
Just like to say that I know this has been going on for a long time, and I'm glad we're finally getting it done.
Yeah. Alderman Berkowitz.
Same here.
Yes. Any questions, comments over here? Yep. Okay, very good. Well, I just want to say we appreciate all the hard work that you guys do every day, and we're thrilled to give you the benefits that we are able to. And again, glad you came to visit our meeting, yeah. All right, no further comments. Alderman Lins.
It's a pleasure to introduce Bill sixty-nine forty-two to approve the Uniformed Employee Retirement Fund Plan Revisions to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine four-two, first reading, an ordinance amending the City of Clayton Uniformed Employees Retirement Plan and Trust by including a one-time offering of a backdrop deferred retirement option program, a forward drop, and a purchase of military service credits, and approving a restatement of the pension document.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, any opposed? Let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous, no?
You don't need that yet, in a minute.
Oh. You said all those in favor, okay, yeah, go ahead. First move.
Give unanimous consent.
I'm skipping.
I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill sixty-nine forty-two on the day of its introduction.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, there's a delay here, I'm sorry. Let the minutes reflect the board has given unanimous consent.
I'll now introduce Bill sixty-nine forty-two to approve the Uniformed Employee Retirement Fund Plan Revisions to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? City Attorney.
Bill number sixty-nine four-two, second reading, in consideration for adoption, an ordinance amending the City of Clayton Uniformed Employees Retirement Plan and Trust by including a one-time offering of a backdrop deferred retirement option program, a forward drop, and a purchase of military service credits, and approving a restatement of the pension document.
Alderman Lins.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Mayor Harris.
Aye.
All right, last but not least, a motion for disposal of record.
Yes, it is the recommended guideline of the Secretary of State to formally approve the disposition of records at the Board of Aldermen level, and to include a list which describes the record series, including quantity to be disposed, the manner of destruction, and the destruction date. A list of records from the Fire Department and Planning Department was included in the packet. Based on the Board's past discussions, staff has reviewed the records and confirmed that these are material, that these materials meet the retention schedule set forth by the Secretary of State, that these records are no longer needed by staff. We have also verified that this list does not contain any records we would consider to be of a historical nature. And following the Board's request that a method of disposal be procured that assures maximum security and confidentiality of the records, the city has arranged for a company to come to City Hall and shred the records on site. This will occur in a timely manner upon approval of the motion by the Board of Aldermen. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen approve a motion to dispose the records as listed in conformance with the Missouri Secretary of State General Records Retention Schedule.
Very good. I'll open the discussion. Any discussion?
Have we ever had a request for something that we've already destroyed?
No, but we've had a request for something that was destroyed in the tornado, during the tornado a few years ago. We had off-site storage out in Earth City. That building that it was stored in was destroyed, and so we had records.
Yeah.
Many years ago, we accidentally destroyed some historical stuff that certain people wanted, and, yeah, but that's long, long behind us. Ira, any questions?
I'm imagining that we have less and less to destroy, right? Are we going more and more paperless? Especially in our planning department?
Yes, all of our permitting is now online in the Planning Department, so we've been pushing people that way since the beginning of the pandemic. So that creates an electronic file, which is great. There's still some requirements for hard copies, and we'll continue to comply with those regulations, but as soon as those records no longer need to be kept, we can dispose of the paper copies and retain the digital files. Same is true with Public Works, where a lot of that has gone online. So everywhere we can go to online permitting, we're making that move, and we've actually had it implemented now for going on three years, so. We should get to a point, I would think, in about five years or so, where all of those records will be kept digitally, so anything we're getting rid of as far as paper copies, it's not going to matter so much.
Thank you.
Questions? Susan, questions? Gary?
Seems to be a hand up on the screen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, all right, thank you. Mr. Berland, do you have a question for us on this?
Yes, I was wondering what the cost was.
The cost for?
The shredding? Yeah, the shredding and the approve. Yeah, how much this?
For shredding, you mean, or?
It's associated with this disposal of records. I don't know if it's simply the shredding, or if they have to be stored, or whatever. Is there a cost associated with that?
Yes, Mr. Berlin, there is a cost associated. We don't have that cost until we know how many boxes that we have. They go by boxes and barrels, because they'll empty the boxes into the containers and then shred them. So it's per container.
Okay, so is there any idea of the range? Are you talking about?
It could be, it can range from forty-two dollars per container.
No, I understand that, but I'm talking about the item. Several items have come up tonight, and there hasn't been a budget connected with them, the lockers at the pool and so forth, and I'm just wondering how much the Aldermen are approving for these various.
We do budget for shredding each year. I believe the budget that we carry, it's per department. For instance, for the Mayor and the Board of Aldermen's budget for shredding, it's usually about seven hundred and fifty dollars a year.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Berland, every item that was presented tonight is already budgeted, has been already budgeted, either in our, you know, operating budget or our capital improvement budget. That's most of what we talked about tonight. For example, the lockers at the pool. So those are all budgeted items, and they're all, most of those are projected to be a little bit less than what we budgeted, so. We don't do anything without a budget.
Thank you, thank you very much. That sounds great.
Okay, very good. And, Mr. Winkelman, you have your hand up. Any questions for us?
We want to share an incredible journey of trying to understand how Clayton has evolved physically, and how I got fascinated with the whole issue of approvals of planning projects that have built so many projects in Clayton. They go from Purele Cleet to, you know, the project that's on Forsight Point, you know, and the planning submissions and the laws that have been associated with them. And it has been so difficult. You all know how well, there were no documents available. You would have to go into the planning office, and there would be these eleven-by-seventeen binders, but you really couldn't see it, you really couldn't copy it, you couldn't take it home. And you couldn't find a way to defend Maryland School and try to find a way to make it a public park. And you couldn't find the documents to show that the Centene proposal was totally incorrect when it was developing a circular drive drop-off. So this discussion deals with the incredible intersection of, let's call it, your laws and the availability, the openness, the transparency of it to other citizens. And this is going to be on your doorstep next week, right on Merrimack. So, and I sort of admired the money that you were giving to firefighters to have a three-D imagery of every building, but I'm not sure how that moves into, I'll call it, energizing our planning community, which is our public, about where we are and what we might consider and how it impacts our previous laws and what we really want to create.
Well, Mr. Winkelman, I thank you for those comments, and I think you'll find our comprehensive planning process very interesting and right up your alley. And so I hope you'll pay attention to our notices and be part of that discussion. Thanks so much.
I do want to mention that no zoning documents or anything associated with the zoning. I, I do want to mention that no zoning documents or anything associated with the zoning approval is, is contained in this, uh, request to dispose records. So, uh, anything that, that goes through the zoning process, uh, is retained. Also, uh, any of those permits or documents associated with a building that's newly constructed, we're required to retain those throughout the existence of that building. So as long as the building is standing, we have to retain, uh, those original documents. So, uh, none of that is impacted by this particular disposal of records. So anything that goes through the zoning process has been built in the city, um, or is being built in the city, those are records that we'll keep in perpetuity.
Thank you. Very good. All right. Any other discussion? All right, Alderman Lance.
I'll pr- move to approve the disposal of records as listed.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, very good. That completes our business, I think. Um, that's a long agenda. Thank you, everyone who came to share and, uh, answer questions and all that good stuff. Appreciate it. I think at this point, we typically go around and have a little round table of what people have been doing. I suspect a lot of people have been celebrating the holidays, but we'll go around starting with Alderman Lance.
Um, I can't think of anything other than a sustainability, getting ready for a sustainability meeting, but, um, so, um, nothing related to report.
Okay, very good. Alderman Berkowitz, anything to report?
Yeah, we had a Parks and Rec, uh, meeting last night. And the, the subject for most of the meeting was, um, the pool and, and some of the issues they have with the pool at this point. One of the biggest issues is the availability of, of lifeguards to actually man the pool after, um, mid-August. And, um, so there was a lively discussion, uh, about how to deal with that. And there was some resolutions that were, I, I believe that were voted on and passed. Um, but the bottom line is, is that after Labor Day, um, keeping the pool open for lap swimmers apparently is, is really not possible. Um, not presently anyway. And so, um, and if Tony wants to speak to that, that right now, that would be fine. Um, but, uh, you know, I, I think she knows more about it than I do, but, um, but that was the subject for last night's discussion and, um, I think we came through a, we were at a crossroads when it comes to that, the, the pool and keeping it open, uh, after Labor Day.
Interesting. Um, probably need some time to work on that. But, yeah, we'd love to know that we, I'm sure we all know a lot of people who love that lap swimming, you know, in the mornings. So, okay, thank you. Becky.
Uh, we've had a couple of plan commission meetings since the last time we've all met. Um, but a lot of the, um, a lot of what we approved tonight was before the plan commission. And we've talked a lot about, about the comp plan in the last couple of meetings. Um, and I also just wanted to give a shout out to Tony and staff at the center. The basketball season started in earnest with games last weekend and, um, they did a great job. It was remarkable to see that many people back at the center, um, and really cool. Um, they've started, um, parents and people, actual spectators for games have to come in with a QR code, which I think was a great way to, um, just make sure that the center stays a little bit more secure on those game days because people were just walking in saying, yeah, I'm here to say a game. So, um, but I, you know, overall, I think it was great and it was well received. So, um, again, it's just exciting to see the center. So, you know, busy and doing well again. So.
Very good. Alderwoman Buse.
Hi, yes, I was with Ira last night and Tony with the Parks and Rec and, yeah, the lifeguard discussion in the pool schedule was the primary topic. And, um, also mentioned, it was also discussed that the Maryland Park Grant had come through and that was going out to bid next month, which is great. And that the Anderson Park landscaping signage will be up this spring.
Okay. Great. Anything?
Um, yeah, the only thing I want to share about is a program that I went to on January fifth at the Kirkwood Public Library. Um, Vivian Gibson is a local author and she spoke about, um, a book that she wrote called On Becoming a Mill Creek Child. Um, and, or no, the book is called The Last Children of Mill Creek. And the event was called what I just said. Anyways, um, she was super, um, engaging as a presenter and, um, the story of Mill Creek is, uh, seems to be very similar, um, to the story of our own black neighborhood and others in the region that were, um, you know, targeted for destruction during the time of urban renewal. And so, um, it was just very interesting, um, and a really great program.
Great. Alderman Fader, any?
Um, last Thursday, I attended the community conference that Keely, uh, the Keely Organization, uh, put on for the community as part of the PUD process in connection with their proposed apartment project, which is at Merrimack and, uh, North Brentwood and Pershing. Um, and, uh, I think the community who attended were, were generally receptive. That project seems to be moving in a good direction and I guess we'll be hearing more about it in the next few months, but I thought that was, that was very positive. And we have an interesting meeting of the Community Equity Commission this Thursday at five thirty. I think we have seven religious leaders, people of various, uh, churches or other denominations who will be attending to talk to the, uh, commission about their efforts, uh, in terms of diversity and equities. It should be an interesting discussion. I'm sure anybody else on the board or anyone else who is in the public who's interested in attending, I think it will be a good discussion. And that's here this Thursday at, uh, five thirty.
Very good. Thank you. I just have a couple of things. One is, um, just to build on what you said, Becky, about Milk, the Mill Creek area. Um, first of all, one of the, um, one of the people really involved in, uh, sort of commemorating that and what, what's going on in the city there is Gwen Moore. And she serves on our Commemorative Landscape Task Force. So there's been a lot of crossover of ideas and insight that relate to our commemoration of Black neighborhood. And she's, she's really been a big part of that effort. Um, and then if you have not been to the new soccer stadium downtown, um, go over there and check it out because they have done an art installation that is really amazing in, to honor the Mill Creek. And one of the coolest things, it's a, you know, art sculptures and all that, and the names and addresses of all the people who live there. It's pretty impactful when you see it. And I thought one of the most impactful things was they, 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 uh, reserved space uh, for about, I can't remember, but about four or five plots of actual footprints where those, um, brownstone or townhomes were right along Market Street. And so it's a, it's a little grass yard with a bench and it has the address of the family that lived there. And it, it really, it really is, uh, it's really, they did a great job is what I want to say. And, um, it's very impactful and it's worth going down there to see it. Um, secondly, let's see, I, I want to report that I have been interviewed by the Globe, the high school paper. And they wanted to talk to me about housing and, and specifically affordable housing. So there's, they're gonna, their articles are generally very long and very detailed. And I know that they were trying to contact, uh, the Chair of our, uh, Equity Commission about this and hopefully they succeeded. Um, and so, uh, that, that's nice that there's some interest there. Um, when did we go to the housing seminar? Was that before the last meeting? So did we already talk about that? Okay, we did. Okay. Um, so never mind. And then, um, I did a little, um, I did get to meet with some Cub Scouts last night and talk to them about government and, um, they had lots of questions and they were unbelievably well informed. This is fifth graders. So they're doing a little, a badge about, uh, government and how it works. And so, anyway, and laws and all that good stuff. So, um, that was fun. Those are always really fun. So, yeah, um, that's all I have, I think. And.
Mayor, I was interviewed by the Globe about trash.
Oh, trash.
Well, it sounds like your interview is probably a little bit more enlightening, but I talked about trash. So, in Clayton, obviously.
Well, I found from my interview, David sent me the presentation that was done at the Equity Commission, uh, earlier this year or last year. Um, and I found that information very, very helpful in terms of trying to help them understand, you know, what the issues are and what cities can do. And there are a lot of things cities can do to forward this notion of what I like to call now attainable housing, new word I learned. So, all right, anything else from our city manager?
Uh, I, I will just say, this is my favorite kind of agenda because I think every department was represented with an item tonight. Um, I just want to say staff and department heads are all doing a great job and it's all reflected in, in what you see this evening. So thank you all very much.
Very good comment. Yes, the best of the best. That's what we've got. All right, I think with that, we'll take a motion to adjourn.
A move to adjourn?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Right. Very good. Good night, everybody.